This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. There is a presence of a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for coming out today. And first off, we have public participation, in which we do not have public participation. There is nobody from the public who wants to participate. Next, we have the oath of office for school trustees. We have a couple of board members. One's signing up for a new term and we have somebody that's coming on board for the first one. Mr. Leverett, if you'll join the trustees at your place. And Ms. Orr will proctor the oath of office for you and Mr. Newsom.
Having been presented with the certificate of election and executed the statement of officer, I ask that you please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Ms. Leverett.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Trustee
Of the Office of Trustee.
Of the Tyler Independent School District
Of the Tyler Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, at this time, I ask that you sign the oath of office that is in front of you, and then we'll get started.
Congratulations.
All right, well, congratulations to both of you. Mr. Leverett, welcome aboard. Happy to have you onboard and look forward to working with you. And Mr. Newsom, congrats on another term. Okay, so next on the agenda is consideration and action on the reorganization of the Board of Trustees. We do this every year. And every year, I can't remember which one we do first. So typically, it's the president, I believe. So I'll entertain any motion on that item. Happy to serve in whatever capacity the Board will have me serve in, as always. I say that every year, and I think the same goes for Mr. Martinez as well, even though he couldn't be here today. So any ideas or conversations y'all want to have on that is open.
I'll go ahead and open up. Always an awkward thing, yearly thing, so we can laugh about it a little bit. I would say, kind of what we did last year was, you know, elimination, or, you know, like, for instance, I don't have any interest in serving as an officer. If anyone does, now would be a good time to speak up. I feel like Wade's done a great job leading this board, but if anybody else wants to get in a leadership role, you know, it's probably time to speak up. As I said before, Erin and I both, our terms are up next year. Don't know if we're running again or not, but it'd be nice to have some people learn how to be a board officer, as I did when I was early on in my years. So don't be shy, but if... Anybody?
I have no desire to serve. I did talk to Erin about it and asked him if he was willing, and he said he was serving any capacity that we chose to put him in. So...
Okay.
I feel the same way, and I mean, I do want to step up at some point. I just feel still very green and new, but I definitely do want to step up at some point. I just don't know when that right time is, but...
All right, well, then...
I feel green and new, but I will consider it.
Okay. Well... So, yeah, I can't, I can't make a motion, but, you know, as far as president goes. So, you know, if anybody wants to, I mean, I'm happy to serve for another year, as always, at the pleasure of the Board. If it ever became an issue with anybody on the Board, I'm not about that. It's not something that I hold on to. It's not something that I ever intend on using, and I think, and I hope, everybody knows that, as any sort of leverage, I consider myself just another board member. So, but in the spirit of training up some new folks, I mean, it's up to y'all. So I can't make a motion, but like I said, happy to serve in any way, and, you know, wouldn't be opposed to, you know...
Yeah.
Like you're referred to.
There's not a term limitation on holding the capacity of president, right?
No. No, sir, just, just kind of one of those things that we discuss every year and have a super awkward public meeting about.
And it's serving three years, right? Not just one year, it's three-year terms? Is it three-year terms?
One year.
One-year term?
No, it's one year.
I didn't remember. I didn't remember doing it in...
You know, the last couple of times, we've just been like, hey, let's keep it rolling. That's kind of been the deal.
Okay. I didn't even remember.
Yeah, yeah, the last couple of years, it's actually been pretty non-memorable. We've had some that were. So I'll entertain a motion on that item if anybody wants...
It seems like, you know, maybe for another year, we're all good with Wade being president, and then we can talk about vice president. So I'll make a motion that Wade be nominated as president of the Board again.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you, I really, I mean, it's, it's an honor. It is a little bit more if anybody ever gets to this seat, but it's one of the most, I mean, it's just one of the biggest honors I've ever had. I say that honestly, so thank you.
You did a great job.
Well, I appreciate it. So now, now VP, if anybody wants to entertain a motion on that one, once again, I can't make a motion, but I'm sure whoever, whoever it is will serve and do a good job.
Did I hear Ms. Atkins say that she's willing to serve?
Willing to try to learn.
Heck.
I'm willing to try to learn.
In that case, I'd nominate Ms. Atkins as VP. Like, I did talk to Erin about it, and he did say that he would serve, but, you know, he said he wasn't, yeah.
Well, I've got a motion for Mrs. Atkins.
I'll second that, and let me just say that, you know, Erin's done a great job, and it's nothing at all against Erin. He's done perfect as a vice president. There's no complaints that any of us have had, but I think it's great for some new blood to get in as well, and would support that motion.
Okay, I'll also say this, too, I mean, just because maybe, you know, I mean, in the future, I mean, we'll have had, and if Erin runs again and serves again, we'll have multiple people with officer experience, which is always good, you know, it doesn't have to be jumping from one to the next type of thing. I mean, there's, Andy's served at this point, I've served, Erin's served, you will have served in a year, I mean, so then you've got kind of people that have, you know, been in the hopper, so to speak. So I've got a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Atkins, being vice president of the Board. Look forward to working with you and sitting in agenda-setting meetings, and that's pretty much what we do. So it's not going to be, not going to be anything too crazy. Mr. Washman, we will, just to let the Board know, we will rearrange your seating per tradition of new officers, et cetera, so you'll be one of these, Ms. Atkins, up here. Yeah. So we'll figure that out. Being the camera shot. As appropriate. All the time.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so now, we have to appoint, as we do every year, certain people to certain committees. Board secretary. We have board secretary. Do I have a nomination on board secretary?
I move we approve Gina Orr.
All right. Anybody else want it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Gina, I mean, thank you. I mean, I don't know what we would do without you, and I don't know what Dr. Crawford would do without you either.
That's in line.
It's not said enough, it really isn't, so we do appreciate you. Okay, now, that's one that I always, thank you for reminding me on secretary. Are there any other officer positions? No. Internal Audit Committee. Typically, let's see, Mr. Leverett, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and appoint you, that those are, those are ones that are by appointment. Typically, a new member to kind of get familiar with some things, and works with Jan Coker out there, she's our internal audit auditor, and so we usually have two people on that. Artist, would you have any interest in serving on the Audit Committee again? What's it, you're on it right now? Okay, I get them kind of mixed. Would you?
No, Yvonne Atkins is on.
Yeah, that's one of, okay. Would you have any opposition to serving on the Audit Committee? Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, or?
I guess there's not anybody that needs the experience, I guess, you know, I don't care.
Well, you do, you do a good job of keeping us up to date and reporting and all of that. I just, I do appreciate you, what you do on there, so, and that's something that can change. I mean, there's, there's no, we don't have to do it this time every year, so if anybody ever comes and says, hey, you know, I want to serve, or this or that, just let me know, because we can do this, there's, it's not a set thing at the same time every year. And the other one is safety and security. I have to serve on that one, and Trish was on there, so we do have to appoint a new person. And so Lindsey, you had shown interest on serving in the safety and security.
Yeah.
So I'll go ahead and appoint you there. So you and I'll be on the Safety and Security Committee. We meet quarterly, and it is always a good meeting. All of the, I tell you what, I'm just always blown away that in this community, you know, every agency has a seat at the table, and the amount of discussion that goes on and goes, you know, back and forth is pretty impressive, and so it's, it's a neat deal. So, okay, I think our committees are set. Mr. Washman? Yes. Two things. One, you'll need to designate a chair of the Audit Committee, is that correct, Ms. Coker?
Yeah.
From the DIAS? Okay. Artist, you can be chair of the Audit Committee? And then, is there any other? So another one that's not listed on here, we will need, Ms. Atkins is going to be the vice president of the Board. She can still serve on, as the Board's designee on the Tyler ISD Foundation as ex officio. If you'd like to pass that off to someone else, or if there's someone interested, why don't y'all just contact me, since it's not, it's actually not on the agenda today? Ms. Atkins, you and I can have a conversation about that if you'd like to, if you want to remain in that role, or pass it off to someone else as well, and then maybe we'll come back, and I don't know if there's official Board action for that. It's just kind of, hey, this board member has identified themselves, Ms. Farr, as the representative there, so if you have interest in that, let me know. Okay, sounds good, and... That's all I have. We'll need to, I'll need to write that down. Okay. Well, speaking of the Tyler ISD Foundation, we have an annual report next on the agenda. Hi, Ms. Farr, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
We're good.
Good, well, thanks so much. Can you guys hear me? Is this on, too?
Speak into it, because the cameras, you know, all the people watching this right now...
All the people watching it, okay.
Yeah.
I'll make sure. All right, well, thanks, Sides, for having me, and congratulations, Ms. Atkins, but we've loved having you, so. All right, so this year, this time of year, we always give our Tyler ISD Foundation annual report, and just tell you what we've been up to, and the impact we've been able to make, and so excited to do that again this year. So, not that you aren't familiar, but we always like to just remind you of what our mission and work is. So our mission is to provide resources to inspire learning and enrich teaching, and enhance opportunities for the district students through support of exemplary programs. And simply put, the work of the Foundation is we seek funds, and then we grant those funds in meaningful impactful ways within Tyler ISD. Many of the ways that we seek funds are through individual donors, corporate sponsors, employee giving, grant writing, endowment funds, and special event campaigns. And then we give those funds back through district events and programs, scholarships, Night of Shining Stars, professional development grants, emergency grants, and Grants for Great Ideas. And so we were actually able to receive funds in all of those categories this year, and give out funds in all of the... The revenue to date, just kind of breaks down so far, and this is as of June 1st of this year. Our fiscal years run the same as the school districts, so from September to August. So as of June 1, our Board and our efforts have raised a little more than $300,000 for the district in our campaign. Those is, that's funds are primarily in unrestricted funding, and funding that we would utilize in the coming school years. So very excited to see that number there. Some things to just point out, this kind of shows the primary sources of our revenue, just in transparency there. A couple of here that I just want to note is a donor-specific grant that was awarded this year. So this was a grant that I was able to partner with in reaching out to different principals throughout the district, and when we had our Grants for Great Ideas workshop, and invited principals, and just said, we would love to be a resource if you have really great, big, scary ideas that you would like to implement campus-wide, but are far exceeding the $5,000 that we have as a cutoff, we'd love for you to reach out and see what I could do to help write additional grants for things outside of what the district does. Jones Elementary Principal reached out, and we received a $20,000 grant from TC Energy that I wrote for them for their campus this year, so was very excited about that. That's the first time we've received funds from TC Energy in more than 20 years, so we're super excited about that. And then we also established a new scholarship fund with the Hall Family Foundation that is a CTE-focused for our automotive, automotive students. And so that will be started next year, so we'll give out our first awards in that next year. And we also continued, which is something I have to apply for annually, so this is our third year of the Ray H. Marr Foundation Scholarship of more than $25,000, and all of that was given out this year as well. We also hosted our first annual gala in the fall, and our second annual golf tournament. And then additionally, with the help of our Board and some new partners, we're able to establish our annual donor group of the Sustainers Club, and we have had members join that already, so very exciting for that. Gifts to Tyler ISD, so far this year to date, we have gifted a little over $183,000 this year, and kind of a quick breakdown of that just shows through professional development and emergency grants, district events and Night of Shining Stars, so that includes like Call Vacation, Teacher of the Year, Night of Shining Stars. Scholarships, we gave out $45,000 this year in scholarships. Donor-specific grants, that $42,000 is $20,000 from TC Energy that I mentioned earlier, but then also surprising our teachers with a shopping spree this year of $22,000. So we're very excited to do that, and hopeful to be able to partner with Office Max and Office Depot to do that again. And then, of course, our signature program, our Grants for Great Ideas, giving out almost And those funds just break down of 31 Grants for Great Ideas is what made up that number, one professional development, and one special campus grant, 22 teachers receiving a $1,000 shopping spree, 18 students made up the $45,000 gifts, celebrating 42 graduating seniors, and 37 distinguished educators. We have several repeats this year at Night of Shining Stars, and then, of course, just continuing to walk alongside the district and supporting them and advocating public education here in Tyler ISD in any way we can. We always like to give you our five-year financial look, and so it just shows the breakdown and numbers from our 990 each year. I am excited to say that I just received, once again, this morning, that we are a platinum-rated charity navigator organization, so that lets people know that we are completely transparent, the funds that we receive go to where we say they're going to go, and that all of our numbers are in good standing. And so the last column just shows you where we are as of 6-1 as well, in our support, so we're excited to see these type of numbers just continue to grow year over year, so that we can continue to give back. And so to date, since our creation in 1990, we have gifted Tyler ISD Foundation with over $3.6 million in support. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on the Board have any comments or questions?
I have a question. Do you, do you find that you get a lot of the local foundations helping you, or is it more outside of the area, East Texas? I know there's so many foundations that give, outside of East Texas, that give. I don't know if y'all, you write grants for that, or you specifically go to local, or...
I would say as far as foundation funding, comes from local foundations. We rarely will have some that are outside of Tyler.
Okay. There's a huge opportunity there for outside foundations
Yes.
That give to education, and might be worth looking into.
Yes, we currently are, and excited to get in, hopefully see some of those come in this year.
Awesome.
Go ahead. Go ahead. The Sustainer Program, tell me what that is a little bit more.
Yes, so the Sustainer Club that we established offers corporates or individuals specifically the opportunity to set up annual gifts, so to say, I'm going to commit $1,000 to the foundation annually as a gift, and so they can do that as an auto-pay, or I can annually invoice them and make those contributions to help sustain the organization.
And they just set the years, how many years they want to do it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Who, who are those people that are doing that? Is it just, when you say sustainers, I mean, you and I know what a sustainer is juniorly, but...
Right, so we have, from community partners, we have parents currently serving in the district that have signed up to do $1,000 annually, whether it be board members, we have community organizations, businesses that have signed up to say, you know, we want to commit to giving $10,000 annually, so a little bit of everyone.
Gotcha.
He probably wouldn't mind, but think in terms of like Tab and Bonnie Bell.
Uh-huh.
That would be a, someone who's just made a commitment now. He, those are big dollars.
Yes, those are, yeah, those are, those are really big dollars.
Thanks, Tab and Bonnie for watching.
Yes. Gary Gross, Dr. Gary Gross, kind of those types.
You just shout out, but anyways, yeah, Gary Gross would be another one that would be...
Yeah. Well, your, your assets have doubled from in five years, and that's very impressive, so obviously y'all are doing a bunch, which is great.
Thank you.
Question in regards to the scholarship gifts. You indicated that the Hall Family is for automotive focus. What about the Marr Foundation? How's it, is it any specific focus or not?
Oh, yes, so the Marr Foundation, it goes into our construction and trades, so it's for students that are, we really show preference to students that are going to be going to like TJC, Texas College, or UT Tyler here for trades programs, but it could be any, any university here in Texas, but specifically for our construction and trades.
And how do the students find out about it? Is it a...
So every year, we send out all of our scholarship information to all of the counselors and things like that. At the CTC, Gary Brown and his team, along with Tim Loper, and they all go over, and they will meet with those individual classes and tell them specifically about our scholarships, programs. We send out all of the information online, social media, so all the students, very much so, have access, and we had a large number of students apply this year.
Great.
Just want to say thank you. I appreciate the gifts that the teachers receive for innovative ideas, and also the Night of the Shining Stars. It's just awesome to see teachers get chosen over and over again, some two and three times by the top students, so thank you for all that the Foundation does and continues to do.
Absolutely, thank you.
Absolutely, it's just so cool that we have y'all and have your support, and money and gifts going directly into students and classrooms is, you know, it's so important, just shows kind of what kind of community we have around here, so thank you for heading it up, leading, leading well.
Smart pleasure, I love it.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Return of the Shack. Here we go, annual report. Return of the Shack. Oh, yeah. Fun, love the word. Rachel Barber, RN, our Director of Health Services for the Tyler ISD School System, supervises nurses, but she also is the point person for the Shack. Here with your annual report is Ms. Barber.
Hi, President Washman, Board, and Dr. Crawford, thank you for having me today. So, Mr. Leverett, if you're not familiar with the Shack, it is a parent-driven committee that partners with district employees as well. We meet quarterly throughout the year. We met four times this year with our Shack. This year, our co-chairs were Kristen Bentley and Catherine Kevler, who are parents of district students, and then I, like Dr. Crawford said, am the district representative. So we did meet four times this year. We actually ended up meeting five times this year, because we threw in one meeting on June 1st that I'll talk about in just a little bit. Some of our things that we worked on this year were to revise our battle laws, because they had not been revised in over 10 years, so we did revise those to meet the regulations and guidelines that are set forth by TEA. We recommended an anti-vaping program for the DAEP, and that is going to be an online program that students that are sent over to DAEP can complete online. It's online modules that they can complete, and then once they complete them, then they will meet with a counselor to go through those things and talk about why they chose to vape, and then they can also complete some other things if they choose, but it is going to be a required thing, that is going to be written into the program over there. And then we also reviewed the upcoming STEAM, STEAM updates that is in that curriculum. They are updating their fifth grade curriculum as well. Some goals for next year, we want to continue to increase parent participation, because as you all know, every year we talk about, we really want to increase parent participation. We have gone to the PTA Council, gone through our counselors, and we started out really strong. We had over 30 people at our initial meeting, and then it just slowly fizzled out as the year came. At our last meeting, we did have about 15 to 16 people at that meeting, and most of them did continue to be parents, so that was really good. Unfortunately, a lot of them have graduating seniors, so we're going to have to really push next year to try to bring back some more students and parents. And then we have a new plan to try to get more student involvement as well. And we're going to try to get more anti-vaping education onto our campuses. We're going to program through UT Health. They actually came on to our campus at DAEP, some resident and fellowship students in the med school program, and they did that presentation at our DAEP, and it was wonderful. Really, it was an interactive program, they, it kind of set up like a game show, so every student has a Google Chromebook, and they do interactive questions the whole time, and then at the end, they had a question and answer session, and the students really responded well. So in the fall, our plan is to bring that on to our secondary campuses and do that program with those students as well. We're also planning to change our meeting time, it's been at 11:30 to 1:00, and we're going to change it to 8:30 to try to get more participation that way. So I did mention one thing that we're going to... So I did mention one thing that we're going to try to do to try to bring some, a little bit more student involvement because we have had some students participating that are in our health sciences programs at CTC. One thing that another local school district around us does is they create a health project that the students get to participate in, doing little bitty projects. And they have to go get a health physical or write a little essay of what they want to do with their life. And so, and they earn like a health shack cord, something that they get to work towards for graduation. That might be something that we consider doing through Shack to try to participate involvement through our Shack. Do you have any questions?
I have a question regarding the participation. Where did you say you get your members from? I know that you said it's parent-driven, but how do you go about doing that?
So it's wide open. Any parent in the district can participate. We send it out, we work with communications, and we send it out to every parent in the district. We post it on our social media, on our website. And then we also invite community members. So I go ahead and send it out to all of my contacts at the hospitals, through Net Health. And so anybody can come.
You said something about the PTAs?
The parent, the PTA Council, and then also the individual PTAs as well at the different campuses. The PTA Council is the one that is made up of, I think, all the presidents and the officers from the individual schools come together and have one central core meeting.
Item of interest, Play It Safe?
Yes, sir.
Just give a little, a brief overview of how we utilize that and kind of where that's going.
So Play It Safe is a program that the Children's Advocacy Center has done in the past, and it was previously approved by the Shack years ago. We used it not this past school year, but the year before and years previously. And it is going to, it comes in and teaches the Senate Bill Nine Lessons that address physical abuse and neglect, basically safe touch and things like that. That's might be how you, excuse me, that might be how you recognize it. It will still require parents to opt in for those lessons, but it's going to be used for grades K through eight. And their staff are highly trained. They will come into our schools and schedule times for all of our schools, and they will come in and teach those lessons.
The pause for this last year, kind of talk about the hiccup on that with Shack's involvement, et cetera?
So we were told that their lesson did not, or their curriculum did not meet the requirements by TEA, but then we have found out that it does. And so that's why we are able to bring it back. That was the June first meeting. And so we had a preview time so that parents could come and actually preview it and see all of the lessons. We showed all of the lessons and had a question and answer time, and then had a time where they could vote to actually bring it back. It didn't have to go through the whole curriculum adoption process again because it actually has already been approved by the Shack and brought to the board and everything and gone through that process. We are putting it through our registration process where parents will have a link so that they can go in and view a preview. They can't see the entire lesson, but they can preview each of the videos and read a synopsis and see how each lesson meets the TEES that are required for each lesson. But if they have any other questions, then they do have a contact on that lesson that they can call. And we're happy to answer any questions that they may have.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay, now we have an update on our Gifted and Talented Program. Taking the table for presentation is Coordinator of Elementary Programming, Gretchen Tebow. Ms. Tebow will actually provide the board a statutorily required Gifted and Talented update. Ms. Tebow?
Good morning, President Washman, Board, Dr. Crawford. This is going to be your six-hour training. It will not take six hours. It's a very brief training. So let me kind of go through the slides. This is our Gifted and Talented definition. We base everything that we do, including this conversation, on that definition. And then basically, we're going to review the state plan as it is to the six domains under Gifted and Talented. These are pieces that we continuously evaluate throughout the year. It's not like a once evaluation. I continually to evaluate all six of those domains throughout the year. For fidelity of services, this is an area, we have some really good strengths in our program with fidelity of services. To the right page. Our identification process, we have multiple pathways for identification, which is increased our GT percentages, which I'll show you in just a little bit. And our goal is always to provide equity and access for all of our students who present those identification pieces of a child that has gifted tendencies and those who need that specialized education. So we look at that, those students performing at the high academic levels, and we refer students from our department directly. Because what we found was, we have, still have some campuses that don't do a lot of referrals for Gifted and Talented, very low on the referral side. That'll be, we'll talk about that in just a moment as well, what we're going to do to address that piece. But we look at state data, STAR data, STAR Renaissance data, which is what we've had historically to use. And we look at those pieces of data for students who may not have been referred for whatever reason. And my department will refer the student. I reach out to the parent, get permission to do testing. And if the parent grants that permission, then we test the child and see if they qualify. We also test all of our second grade students in the district. So we, all in all, we tested about almost 1,500 kids this year with second graders and referrals. And qualified about 10% of those, which is about, you want to be within the five to eight percent range of identification. And so we feel like we're working in the right direction for that equity piece, for sure. We use the nonverbal, Naglieri Nonverbal Test for Kinder. It's a picture-based test. And then we continue to use a COGAT for our first through fifth graders in testing. It's a cognitive abilities test. It's not really content-based, even though there's a verbal section, nonverbal, and quantitative section. It's not like STAR where they're recalling, you know, TEES kind of based information. It's really like, how divergent is their thinking in those three tested areas? So this is the second, third year that we've done universal screening. Previous two years, we did first graders. And what we found was, first graders really struggled with the platform. And we felt like that was a barrier for them to be successful on the test. So we shifted that to second graders, and we actually identified some additional second graders in their second consecutive year of testing, which was really nice. And they were able to facilitate the process. Because October, a first grader is still kind of like a kindergartner, and they're still not quite sure about the technology piece. But I feel like the second grade is a really good age level to do that universal, excuse me, universal screening piece. So we'll talk about that. We're also going to, we're going to continue to look at the equity and the quality of our instruction. We want our instruction, and we plan centrally, you know, as a team. We PLC every single week. The teachers are supposed to deliver the same content across the district about the same time level. We have a scope and sequence. And we really want all of our students to receive the same instruction. We do have a mobility rate in Tyler ISD, so we have a kid that moves from campus to campus. We really want them to be on track with their services as they move from campus to campus. Student assessment, we kind of talked about that a little bit. On the underrepresented campuses, we just have some campuses that are still not referring students like we feel like they should. So we are going to work with those principals to come in and do PLCs if they want us to come in. We'll offer that PLC training, additional training for how do you, what are the look fours in a gifted and talented student? And/or a staff meeting, you know, however they want us to deliver that to their campuses. But we really want to give them something else to help them work through that. And then, and instead of having a testing window per se like we've had previously, we're really going to test kids throughout the year. And not like on a daily basis, but once a month or so, once every six weeks, any kids that are referred throughout the year, we're going to test them and place them instead of waiting until the following academic year so they can begin their services pretty much immediately. They wouldn't have to wait. Our service design, we are continuing at the campus level as we have. Like I said, we have PLCs every week to ensure alignment and rigor. We are going to continue with the state-required Texas Performance Standards Projects, TPSPs. And we did, this year, we did what was called an Invention Convention. And the students created something to solve a problem. They were able to present those to their peers and also to families that came in. We're invited for our Invention Convention Expos. We'll also start to embed those instructional strategies that have the higher effect size and leverage for their learning, to kind of mirror that with their gen ed pieces. We'll also continue that frequency of our walkthroughs through the classrooms, again, ensuring that equity to access in the classrooms, regardless of what campus the students are Our curriculum is TEES-based, and we feel like that is a nice, you know, rigorous piece for us. We, again, we utilize Invention Convention pieces through their STEM, Think Law. There's a lot of writing in Gifted and Talented. They have to write presentations, they have to write all kinds of different things. So we feel like that's giving them some additional components for learning and also that written component that's on now in STAR. So I think that helps to support what's happening in the gen ed classroom as well. And some of the areas we want to address with the inventions and the projects in particular is the quality projects, the presentations of those projects, and the products that they're, you know, producing through those. We really want that to be at a high level so that we know that students are getting the rigor that they need. As far as professional development, the GT teachers have a lot of professional development throughout the year. Again, weekly PLCs. They attend the Texas Association of Gifted and Talented every December. And then as far as our teachers across the district, I'm kind of in charge of that too, of making sure that they get their GT update or their 30-hour training as their first year teacher. Again, we're going to use some campus PLCs, excuse me, and/or staff meetings for that to assist with that identification and referral process and testing, whatever we need to do. And adding that differentiation for our high achievers is really, really critical. We know that they tend to be not the kids that we differentiate enough for, and it's hard to differentiate for them. So adding that as a PLC, like what can teachers do to differentiate for their higher learnings throughout the instructional day? Our community and family involvement, we're going to increase that as well. This year, we had our expos for Gifted and Talented Invention Convention at the campuses, and each campus held their own. Some of them were very well-attended, and we learned a lot about that, not like having maybe a sign-up to come in to do the Invention Conventions because campuses were very inundated with families, which was great. And then some had lighter attendance, and we're going to look at ways to bolster that piece. This is a great opportunity for campuses to add to their, they have to have Title I events throughout, they have to have at least one every month. And so this is another way that they can do that and work in partnership with those campus events. This is our percentage of GT students at our elementary campuses, and that actually has increased over the last three years. Every year, we have had an increase in that. And then this is our secondary campus representation. And this is our breakdown by race. And this is on the elementary side. And you see that our Hispanic is at 43%. And what's significant about that is, one of the things that we've done is to identify our emergent bilinguals and ELL students for Gifted and Talented and ensuring that they have that equity and access. The great thing about that is, it is such, it has increased so much over the last three years that this year, we were able to reposition one of our PCNs into a bilingual GT teacher, which is really, really exciting. So this teacher will be able to deliver instruction in Spanish and English, and the students will be able to respond in Spanish and English for those bilingual campuses. She will largely serve Birdwell, since they're the dual-language campus. And then I have two other campuses, and we look at, they have very high Hispanic populations. And it's just very exciting that we're, you know, able to facilitate that piece for our bilingual and emergent bilingual students. And there's our secondary GT percentages by race. And this really kind of shows you that representation of campuses. This is all of our elementary campuses. And so we really could honestly use another bilingual GT teacher based on this information. The one that I have will serve Birdwell, Douglas, and Bonner because those tend to be our campuses that have that dual-language piece and in their instruction, it supports the campus piece. But we definitely could, you know, look at the future of adding another bilingual teacher to the mix. I think that would be really, really awesome. And there's our percentage of secondary GT students by race. And that's your training for this year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on the board have any comments or questions?
I have a question. My son was in the GT program, and it's phenomenal. It really is. What he was able to do is just so cool. But when did y'all start the testing for all second grade? That's...
This year was the first year for second grade. The last two years, it was for, I had, did it for first grade, but that was only two times that I'm aware of. I just started in this program, this is my third year, any of my third years.
Yeah, because you used to have to only be referred.
Correct. Correct.
But you guys are also looking at their academic, their performance and all this, and then you're also referring them into the program mid-year too now.
Yes.
That's awesome. I love that.
Yes, great, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to come in regarding that. I appreciate that, second grade, because I think, like you said, I think that's appropriate, a better area to test. The other thing I was concerned about, but the campuses not referring students. Now, you're testing all the students in TISD second grade. Now, those campuses that testing, is there a complication in how it's done? Do you provide the staff, or does the campus have to provide the staff?
Yes, we, I go to the campuses and I do the test. I coordinate with the campuses, so they pick the date that's appropriate for their campus needs. And then we go in and we actually do the testing. So the testing is the same throughout the district? That's a really great question. So that delivery, the test itself is same, you know, all across the district?
So have you thought about why the campuses may not be referring a number of students?
I think there's a couple of things. I think, you know, they take that foundations training as an early teacher, that 30 hours, and they really work on that identification piece in that 30-hour training. And it's really not revisited, I don't think, enough in their updates. The updates that they receive every year are more driven towards classroom instruction, which is also super important. But I think they forget, like, okay, what do I need to look for in a Gifted and Talented student? So that's why I really want to go to the campuses and do those presentations in PLC, like a small group kind of thing with grade levels or staff meeting, whatever the principal...
Okay. One other question, which may not be directly related to you, and maybe Dr. Crawford can answer it. But it's regarding the honor societies. And I was at Boulder, and they were saying at that time, when I was talking to them about it, they said they didn't have one on that campus. Do our campuses have honor societies? I know they have to have a sponsor and all that, but do all our campuses have honor societies? Or where are we?
The guy that's responsible for K8 schools right there can answer that question for me.
Hey, there we are. So actually, to answer your question, we, this spring, sat down with all four of our middle schools as well as our high school folk to make sure we have a uniform set of bylaws and expectations for honor societies at all four comprehensive middle schools, as well as Birdwell and Caldwell. They both, to my knowledge, they were doing inductions this spring, but they should have that in place. I don't believe it was in place prior to this year, but it should be, it is in place. We have a common set of bylaws and expectations at all four of our comprehensive middle schools, as well as Caldwell and Birdwell at the middle school level. And it's different when you get to NHS versus NJHS at the high school level.
Okay, that's great. Then, I should know the answer to this one, but on the secondary campuses, TLMS, I was three lakes middle school. Okay, that's why, I just completely, well, that's...
It's all right, I'll write it down, it's actually the number three and then LKS behind it, so. Sometimes that, yeah, because Tyler Legacy and Tyler, and Three Lakes, they kind of share the TL.
Okay.
Confusing sometimes. I will say, I'm very appreciative, Dr. Crane at Jones, looks like her African-American numbers of identified kiddos leads the district. And so I think that, you know, that's a vanguard for us because that's been something I've asked about time and time again, something there as well, making sure that we're as equitable as we can across our ethnicities, no doubt about it. So appreciate her efforts and what she's doing, making that important.
Definitely.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you for your training and your presentation. Okay. We do have some action items to work through right now. The first being the approval of the Head Start Program information report for 2022 and 2023.
Yes, sir. You've got that in your packet for y'all's review. If you have any questions about that after the fact, Brandy Holland is our Director of Head Start here in the district. She's here today. But this is an annual action for the board to actually receive this report, ask your questions as needed. If you have any questions, obviously Brandy Holland would be your go-to or Dr. Grubel.
Okay. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on that item if anybody doesn't have any, any questions at this moment in time.
Of course, I have a question.
Uh huh.
One question. I, I was looking at the chronic absences in the report in regards to Head Start. I know that it's, sometimes it's hard to determine why, but I noticed that.
Yes, good morning to the board, President Washman, Dr. Crawford. So of course, with our Head Start students, their first introduction to school is through the Head Start Program, and we're also working with their families. So a qualifier for Head Start, of course, these are our most needy students, and so with that, we typically are dealing with parents that have a lot of either children or just things going on. And so the way that we base our program is when there are absences, we actually have a policy that we explain to the parents through excessive absences. So once they get to about three, we're notifying the parent and saying, hey, you know, your child has three absences at this point. What's going on? Is there a transportation issue? Once he gets to five to eight, we call him in, we have a conversation. Throughout that whole process, we're basically trying to train the parent on the importance of coming to school, but there are, if there are other issues affecting why they're not bringing them, then we also are able to have those conversations at that time.
We don't provide transportation at that point.
We do not.
Okay.
So the parents actually have to not only bring them to school, but they have to get out of their car and walk them to the door for Head Start.
Right, okay.
And there's also a Department of Transportation requirement about pre-K transportation as well and below, so about seat belts or car seats. It's the car seats, that's what kind of gets in the way of that if you were to do that.
Okay. All right.
I move we approve out of May.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Next, we have to consider the approval of a contract and sale of excess land at 2621 North Border, the former location of Dogan Middle School.
And Mr. Loper is going to make his way up towards the front of the room as y'all ponder this prior to any questions you may or may not have for Mr. Loper. Have any questions?
Are we approving the contract?
Yes, sir, we're approving the...
Actual sale?
Yes, sir.
Just the contract?
Mm-hmm.
Got a feasibility period in it?
It does, 30 days.
Okay, that seems reasonable. How much earnest money?
10%, I believe is what's in the contract.
We're looking that up for you right now.
Then the closing is 30 days?
Yes, sir, after...
$10,000, not 10%.
Oh.
Okay.
There you go, little difference. It's all right.
I got the 10 right.
Four and six of 10%.
Now, question. We, we had talked about some restrictions regarding the sale of this property.
Yes, sir. We have that in the contract.
Is that included in the contract or...
We did, it's in the contract by addendum. There's deed restrictions, and it will also follow through, all through the closing to make sure that it's implemented. And we actually requested that, three things, that it be zoned R1B, which is residential, And we also asked that it, the property or the development be named after the Dogan, after Dogan Middle School. And we also asked that if any interior streets are actually developed within that development, that they be named after the mascot of Dogan, which is the Falcons.
So for example, it could be Dogon Heights and Falcon Way, that type of thing. Okay.
Falcon Freeway.
Falcon Freeway, there you go.
But yes, sir, that is, that's in the contract.
Right. And fair, fair market value?
Yes, sir. We, it was on the market for 51 days out there, and there were several other interested parties, but this, this party that is purchasing it is an investment group out of McKinney, and they're a developer, and so they came up with the right, right cost, right amount.
We did have some interested churches wanting, inquire about the district donating the property so they could build a church building there as well. So just kind of a, be fully transparent about that. This bid came in as the best bid.
Looks like a good deal to me. I move we approve the contract.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Next one is, is approval of the resolution for the completion of the sale and closing documents for the excess land at the old Dogan Middle School.
Yeah, this two-step process is, is what you do when you, you sell property. So this is attached to the information you just received from Mr. Loper.
I move we...
Let me ask one question real quick. So if it's got a feasibility period and they back out, do we need to do this resolution now or do we wait till the contract goes hard?
Are you out of option?
That can go either way. If the buyer backs out during the feasibility period, essentially the resolution is moot.
Okay. This gives Mr. Washman the authority to sign, by the way. That's, that's a little bit of the flexibility on this as well, correct?
Correct. If we don't get to closing, that's not, that's not an issue.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I move we approve the resolution for the completion of the sale and closing of Dogan.
Thank you. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. You know, this, this is good. It's, it's, you know, and I know we're, we're looking at all facilities and land, and we don't like to hold on to, to extra things, and, and this is kind of us leaning up a little bit. And I look forward to taking a look at, at other facilities too and just seeing where we can cut some, trim some fat and as we move forward for the, for the taxpayer and the district. Okay. Now we have to consider a proposal to install safety and security film on exterior doors and ground-level windows.
So these next two items for support in, for the administration, the subject matter experts of Agent Jeff Millslegel, our Director of Safety and Security, and Director of Facilities, Tim Loper are here today to answer any questions. Pretty self-explanatory about what these are. As y'all know, the legislative session has focused immensely on school safety and security, so much so that they went from $9.67 per kid to $10 per kid funding. So Agent Millslegel and Mr. Loper have a 40-cent boost in their budgets to be able to do some of these things. Actually, these things are grant-funded. I just needed to make sure that we go ahead and get that jab in there. So, gentlemen, anything that y'all would like to add to this? This is just our on, is part of our ongoing efforts to make sure that we're safely securing our facilities appropriately. Some of this is actually going to be written into TEA law as far as adjacent windows to doors, et cetera.
And we've already did a pretty good job with Esser Funding as far as film on, on a lot of windows in the district, correct? So this, yeah, this is, this is just adding on to that, so. Any, any questions or is everybody pretty familiar with the...
And you said the funding is state money?
State money.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on that item.
I move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Last one we have here is, is a fencing upgrade and replacement at Jack Elementary School.
So we've kind of talked about this from time to time in regard to safety and security updates, especially those of y'all that have been on the, the big team for safety ISD, for the security, safety and security, about what is a scalable and a non-scalable fence? Jeff, come up and just real quick, I don't want to make you talk too long. These folks have jobs and lives to get back to, but just kind of address specifically the Jack one as it relates to the rest of our campuses and what might be coming down the pike as well.
Jack is unique in the fact that your six-foot fence that runs all the way around the back playground.
It does not encompass the soccer field, so we would not be in compliance with the new 2022-2025 School Safety Formula grant. By tearing the fence down and building it all the way around the soccer field back to the gymnasium, we have been in compliance with that. So in September, when we check the box for TEA, we can say we're in compliance with fencing. We're also looking at other areas to upgrade the fences. Those include DAP and Caldwell, where it's three feet, four feet high. They must be a minimum of six feet non-scalable, or if they're scalable, they have to go to eight feet. This will be an eight-foot fence all the way around the backside of Jack.
Scalable being something you can get your foot in, like a chain link or something like that, as opposed to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got to add that extra two feet.
Yeah.
Or we've got our Ameristar fencing, that faux wrought iron that we've got, that we've seen elsewhere, that's actually allowable.
Yeah.
Which one are you going to do at Jack?
It's going to be an eight-foot chain link.
Black vinyl gauge.
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
That's a big fence.
1,067 feet.
Do we have any others in the district that are eight-foot chain link and around the whole soccer field?
I don't believe so. I believe they're all six feet that I've seen.
We can do that in Head Start playground.
Okay.
So like at Andy Woods, that's a six-foot fence that goes around there. What's the difference between that and Jack? Why are you going eight there and you've got six at Andy Woods?
Andy Woods does cover it because we'll have film and all of that. It's a formula that's, that they work out.
Yeah.
But we would need eight feet all the way around this backside to be in compliance.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to be a troublemaker, but I just wonder for that neighborhood, is that going to look good, having an eight-foot black chain link fence all the way around there? Or why didn't we do the Ameristar?
It's tremendously a lot more money.
How much state money do we have?
For this program is $821,000, and that will go to doors, fencing, the, the film that we're putting on. And once we get through all of those and we meet the minimum standards set by the state, then we can use it for such as two-way radios and cameras.
Okay, so what is the standard? Is it six or eight feet?
For this, it would be eight feet.
For that particular campus, it's eight feet?
Yes.
And some of the other campuses can be six feet?
Yes.
Okay.
It is campus by campus based on, you know, interior areas. So like I was at, at Andy Woods today checking that fence out because they were built at the same time.
Right.
And it still qualifies because they have gated inside things.
Okay.
We'll have to remove some of the, the pillars that are there on the, what would be the east side.
Some of our campuses that have some of that fencing does have some vegetation and some landscaping that are planted, doesn't it, Mr. Loper? Andy Woods does. I know that does. It hides some of that fencing. I don't know if that's something that would interest y'all or not, but that's something that could be pretty affordably done if, as needed. And you're saying that they're, remind the board that this is going to be a state requirement?
Yes, it is.
But only for Jack, but not with the, you wouldn't have to replace Andy Woods?
Correct.
So the issue, the issue is where they can go have recess at Jack?
Right, yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's the issue here. They have an area that's already fenced in.
Right.
But it's where your basketball courts are and your, there's just a little bit of dirt.
Yeah.
You'd like to say it's a grass, you can't keep, you can't grow grass, them mashing it down. So when they need to go ahead and get out and run a little bit, they go outside of what our perimeter says, and that's what TEA is saying.
You can't do that anymore.
I mean, this is a, you think it's a Tyler problem? This is a state...
Yeah.
...issue on recess areas and et cetera.
Well, I mean, this is getting pretty specific, but on an elementary campus, if I think of an Ameristar fence, I think of a first grader going, trying to stick his head through it, trying to get up. I mean, I really do, you know, because there, you've got the, the big gaps...
The bars.
And you can't do it on a chain link, and so, anyway.
So is that the only campus in the district that's out of compliance right now, or do we have other campuses?
DAP is out of compliance, and Caldwell is out because of the, on the west side of the playground. Even though it comes up, there's an area that's only, it's a 45-degree angle, but it's, it's only about less than 150 feet. It'll have to be redone.
Is that down, is there a ramp or a wall?
There's a ramp that comes up from the ball field there.
Gotcha.
Across the street, so that will be coming, but the, the cost is a lot less.
Yeah, and DAP, not to be confused with down the hill...
Yes.
That's in compliance, but up the hill at DAP...
There's some areas that need upgrading.
Yeah, gotcha.
And we're going to be addressing those in the near future. When, when do we have to be in compliance with this?
Well, it's changing, so up until 2025.
Oh.
But we need to get out ahead of this because it, this has changed in the last, since I last spoke to you and gave an update.
Okay. Supply and material costs are also increasing rapidly because vendors are...
They see a huge pot of money out there. It's, it's part of a $400 million safety upgrade for all the Texas schools.
We can't, I'm just concerned with what an eight-foot fence, as I said, is going to look like, because I know that whole area and every house faces the school out there. And I don't know, we, is there no way to fence a certain area and be in compliance and not fence the entire five acres?
It's not the entire five acres. It goes out, out around the, doesn't go all the way around the perimeter.
Okay.
On those back streets. It's only where the soccer field is at.
So it's only the, we don't have anything to show us what part's going to be fenced?
It, it runs down from the school for where the special ed is, past the playground, out another 300 feet roughly to a point in the middle of the lot out there.
Yeah.
And then it heads to the west, and then it comes back to where the gym is at, and it'll be a gate there to get out, to get construction equipment in or the landscaping folks in.
Okay.
Which is also required.
Well, that's, I feel better knowing it's not that entire...
No.
Block.
No, that would be about 5,000 linear feet.
Okay.
So what do you want to, I see where you're going on this. Where, is this the square footage of where it's supposed to be, or did we just come up with that? Is that would be a adequate amount of space? Or is this something that needs to be, that is in compliance with?
It's in compliance to start with, and it is an adequate amount of space to cover that soccer field. Mr. Loper and I measured it off, we walked it.
So we kept the same line, linear that, of the existing fence, and like Dr. Crawford said earlier, this is just an expansion that we didn't do it this way. We didn't encompass all that when we built Jack like we did other schools, like Andy Woods that has their soccer field. Bell Elementary has their entire campus, so we kept it in line and flat on top of that, that flattened area just for that soccer field. I wished I'd have brought the drawing, but I don't have the drawing, but it's actually well short of that back street that runs east and west. I, I was even looking at it thinking, you know, we could probably build a couple of houses right back there, so it's not the entire.
So Clarkston is where the old school was. It has actually a perimeter fence there, and that's where they...
That's correct.
Run around for recess. Same thing for Bell.
Mm-hmm.
Rice, Rice is kind of go- Rice, Rice is kind of goes, what, away from the school, away from north, I mean, from Old Bullard Road.
Right.
Back part, so. I mean, you could go over there at any time, and, and there are so many kids on the playground, they had to have more space, so we, this is basically getting us in compliant and an expansion.
Yeah. Y'all can just show us where it's going across.
I think I see it on my map. You see that back soccer goal? Yes.
Yep. About twenty-five feet behind that soccer goal.
And then to the west, there are some, well, west and the east, there's actually some trees there.
Yeah, it doesn't go to those trees.
Okay, how do we? You can see that back soccer goal because there's a dirt.
Yep.
There's a dirt stripe.
So if you line up with the existing fence all the way to the main building and head south to that soccer goal in a straight line, and then the corner of that gymnasium where the paving is for the basketball court.
Yeah.
And go perpendicular, not perpendicular, parallel, straight back to there. That's correct.
And so it comes out straight off the concrete?
Yes.
Headed south?
Yes, sir.
To right behind the goal?
Okay, correct.
Am I moving the mouse correctly, Tim? Yes.
You are.
There you go.
There, and then straight back up.
Uh-huh.
That's correct, sir.
That's not as bad as it appeared to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what's required and we have to do it, then we have to do it. I feel a lot better knowing it's not that whole block I was envisioning, something that would really look out of place, so.
I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on that item then.
I move we approve item E.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The guy has it and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation, being patient with us.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have a budget presentation for the upcoming school year.
As part of the annual budget process, Natasha Bjork, Deputy Superintendent Finance and Operations, your CFO, is here to provide you a little starter for that.
Good morning. Unfortunately, this presentation is based on current law because we receive no new funding. So this will be our first run on the budget. It'll probably be, remain similar unless they do something really drastic, but we are, we have some funding sources where we will still be able to provide our teacher raises like you approved. So I'll start with a PowerPoint, and in the agenda, there's some details starting on page twenty, and I'll go over that and just some high points later. So the revenue sources we have are state thirty-four percent, local property tax sixty-two, and then federal, we have SARS and some other miscellaneous. This is about the same as it was last year, the same levels for state and local. The state formula revenue, they did increase the golden penny yield, which we have five of those, and so that gave us two-point-six-nine million dollars. And then we have an increase in our estimated ADA and weighted average daily attendance from our prior year, and that's about two and a half million, because we had budgeted a little lower this year because the ADA the previous year, we're able to increase that a little bit. But our local share, when our property taxes go up, our state share goes down, and so that's about a two-point-four-million-dollar decrease. So the increase in state is around two-point-seven million. Local property taxes, I'm sure you're probably aware, our values went up about fourteen percent. What this means is we will be decreasing our tax rate. This is just projected. It won't be final till August, from point-eight-seven-nine-three to point-seven-eight-nine-one. So that's around nine cents. And that's an increase of three million, which is pretty much all we get every year on property taxes. The other revenue sources, the biggest one is our interest income, because the rates have gone up so high, like last year, I think the budget was around four hundred thousand, but the rates have gone up so high, it's going to be around three million dollars for this next year for interest income. So that other revenue is going up three-point-four million. So our total revenue increase is around nine-point-two-three million, which is about five percent of the previous year. Now on to expenses. The payroll and benefits, we already brought to you the first one on teacher and RN, the base pay increase, and then the new five-year bands on your levels of experience, and then administrator raises, three percent, clerical manual trades, five percent, increase in stoppings for teachers in bilingual, secondary science, math, and ELAR, and also special ed. The ELAR and special ed are new this year. We have not been doing that, but bilingual will go from three to four thousand, math and science from two to four thousand, ELARs four thousand, and special ed three thousand. And then we always have like a salary reset because we budgeted a little higher based on the, we had more retirees than newbies coming in, so we can always put a little decrease in there on that. And then we have increase in TRS as usual and for employee raises. So payroll is an increase of seven million dollars of the nine. The remainder is the instruction and instructional support pretty much remained just flat, but we did have to increase graduation academic competition, fine arts competition and supply expense, officials fees and athletic supply expense. They're saying supplies are increasing like twenty to thirty percent. And then we always base regional day school for the death on the fund balance that's left, and so we're going to have a little bit of a decrease in tuition on that for next year. And then enrollment's up, so we have a campus allotment increase. Departmental operating, we have, these are just, the biggest one on this are technology contracts, one-to-one devices and all the related expenses that go with that. And then fuel expense is out of sight for transportation, increase in property and casualty, and then, so that's about almost two million dollars on just those, that list. So we have a balanced budget, nine-point-two-three million in expenditures. Now this will change a little because property taxes are not set yet because of all the, they'll come back to that in August after they have all their appeals, and they had not done all the businesses final yet. So that's all going to change, but if you want to go to the agenda, in the first page of the presentation, with just the summary, is the salaries are about eighty-one-point-four percent of the budget. And then we have a breakdown between campus budgets, operating budgets, and then our preventive maintenance fund, that's the three pennies that we set aside, and that's about one-point-two-million dollars per penny now. That continues to go up. So a total budget of a hundred-and-seventy-eight million or approximately five percent increase. Now I'm going to, the next few pages, I'm going to skip through. It shows our overtime, our campus budgets by school, how we determine our campus budgets, and then we have the operating budgets for departments, and you can go down through there and find any department and whether it increased or decreased. This is just the detail of it. And then the, the next page is our revenue projections, and you can see the increase and decrease for each of those, which I went over in total on the PowerPoint, but this is a more, more detail. The, one I wanted to focus on was our calculation of our tax, current year tax levy. So our values went up fourteen percent, which means our tax rate in M and O, general fund, will go down about nine cents. And then our INS rate at this time, it looks like we're going to be able to go down about four cents, depending on how values come out, but, so that's going to be a total decrease of around thirteen cents in our tax rate, assuming all holds.
We went down twelve last year, right? About twelve cents total.
And it may not be done because the legislature's still working.
Yeah.
So it could be more, that they're having a special session on that, so. But I think it's more going to focus on compression, so that, it will be a lower one, I'm sure. And then the, the next page just shows, again, the detail of our increases and decreases, if you wanted to look line by line.
Okay, any comments or questions for Ms. Bjork?
Before y'all do that, I have one reiteration to repeat for those in the community that are going to go and rewind this and watch. We do not receive a fourteen percent increase in revenue under state law, so while appraisals go up and that, that's a fourteen percent increase, as you've emphasized.
We're limited to two and a half of it.
That's right.
We can only see two and a half of it.
That's right. We're capped. We're not trying to poor boy that and make y'all feel sorry for ourselves, but whenever you get your bill and you see that and you see how your property value's gone up, understand the state has put a governor on, no pun intended, put a governor on it to make sure that, that, that these things are not out of control, so, in regard to that. So we're, we're pretty tight, we are tightly budgeted to whatever increases we are able to, to see per statute, and sometimes that gets, that, that gets, that gets lost in the mix because in the old days, if we went up fourteen percent, y'all could have gone after all fourteen percent. But it's no longer eligible to do that, and we're trying to make it work on a pretty, in a pretty lean way to make sure that our teachers are, are compensated the way that they deserve to be compensated, and we plead from the state to, to also provide some support as well and join us in that effort to make sure all of our teachers are, are paid well.
Thank you.
Just a comment.
Oh, yeah.
I, I really appreciate the way Ms. Bjork does the budget. She's done an excellent job for the district for a number of years, and I, I think I really, it's outstanding in regards to that, I, I do believe. My question, I think Dr. Crawford, we had talked about a special project in regards to the elementary schools possibly putting an aide in the classroom. I was wondering, is that in this budget or will it be the next year's budget or what are we looking at?
That's this year's budget, running a, running a study with two different, two separate classrooms. We can afford that with an aide per cla, in one of those class, in both those classrooms with a teacher. Yes, we can afford that.
Any other questions or comments? I do appreciate, one, I appreciate where we live. I mean, even though values are, are going up a ton, I'd rather live in a place where values are going up rather than going down. But two, even though it does not appear that the state will be, you know, helping out too much with teacher salaries, I'm proud to know that, that Tyler ISD is, you know, kind of putting our money where our mouths are and going ahead and increasing and trying to get teacher salaries up. If anybody deserves it, it's them, for sure. Anybody else have any comments or questions about the budget? Okay, well, thank you for your report. We do have some business to handle in executive session, so we will now go into executive session with probably some action to follow, correct, Dr. Crawford?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Okay.